To this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Councilpersoners Reeves and Kern are not with us tonight, but we still have a quorum and we will proceed with business. First up, we need to approve tonight's agenda. Anyone have any questions on the agenda or additions to it?
Make the motion to approve.
Second is written.
Been moved consecrated to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. Citizen comments?
Just one at a time.
Hearing no citizen comments tonight, we will proceed with our next item, which is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of January 6th, as well as appropriations ordinance 1284, and we do have one addition to that appropriations ordinance as presented, a check for $408 to X Services for some repair work on the heat of that.
Yeah, my accounts payable did not, for some reason, pull up with the rest of it was on the slate to print, but when checks printed, it was not there and it did not update. So if you can do that, I will add it to your agenda next time, getting back to the back.
Moved to approve.
Been moved to approve the consent agenda, and that does include that additional check?
Yes. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda approved. Alright, moving on to items of business. First up, kind of an annual occurrence for us, just a application for the Kansas Airport Improvement Grant.
Yes, as the mayor said, we have annually applied to this program for many years, and I've been working with Lochner on our applications for this time. We're taking a little bit different approach. Because there is a cap on the amount of funding towards paving at 1.6 million, we've looked at ways to get the project into that scope of work for less potential out-of-pocket costs at the city. Right now, paving the runway at the 3,200 feet, concrete is estimated to be two to two and a half million dollars. And so we would basically, if we were funded through the grant 1.6 million, the rest of it would be up to us to cover that, and I just don't think we're in a position at this time to do that. So, a question I asked and was brought up for conversation is, why not asphalt? Is that a possibility? And it is. And so that is how the project scope is right now, is to look at asphalt instead of concrete. As far as lifespan, I asked some of these questions. Asphalt, the lifespan is projected to be about the same, 20 years minimum. For both materials, maintenance is really the thing. And just like asphalt streets, asphalt runway would be a similar maintenance program where every three to five years, you do a rejuvenator and then crack seal and patch is needed. So you'll see that here in the information from Lochner, they provided a map so you can see where that paving would be, and then some probable cost estimates there for the projects. We actually have three applications. We are interested in submitting to KDOT Aviation, and one is the actual runway paving, the other is for design, and the third for construction inspection and administration of the project. So you'll see there, the cost breakouts, I've included in a memo to show that. KDOT for this application requires a minimum of a 10% match from the local. And in the past, I think the last application, we considered also a 15 and a 20% match, and I think we ended up submitting a 15% the last time, and so I've also included that for your consideration. I think, given our current balance of our insurance fund, which has previously been earmarked towards this project, we do have sufficient funds to be able to do a 15% match, and I think it would just be one more thing that looks good on our application. We did have a call with KDOT, a virtual meeting with KDOT Aviation, the new director, week before last, Lochner and I, and that was very good to talk over some of these things and get their input a little bit. Of course, they couldn't tell us whether we'd be funded or not, but just to get some input on what might be the most attractive, and I think this direction is something that they thought would be a good idea to pursue. So, for tonight, I would ask for the council's approval first to submit the application, and then applications, all three, and then your direction on a 10 or 15% match. Should we actually be awarded, final documents would come to you to approve and authorize those funds, but this would be that, so it would authorize us to put it into the actual grant application that's due at the end of the month. I've been working on getting good letters of support towards this project to also help our application. I have one from Senator Moran and our state representative Kyle Hoffman. And I am working with Buffalo Nickel Lodge to get multiple letters of support from customers that they have had that have either flown into our airport or have not, because it's not paved, and to speak to that. So for, from a more of an economic and business perspective, that they can provide some letters of support around our application. So, that will be something different than what we've had in the past as far as support towards this project. Ted Simmons with Midwest Ag is also providing a letter, since he's already using the airport, he's done that in the past, but that'll also be good to have his support behind our application. So, open to any questions or discussion?
When you submit this application, do you have to, what's the word you want to use, say whether you, whether the city's offering a 10% or a 50% match?
Yes, they want to know that. And the 10% is the minimum, but I think as they're reviewing them, putting more in is
Sure.
Looked on more favorably, but yes.
I didn't know whether they would ask
Yeah.
As required, what do you plan on paying to?
Yeah, they, they want assurances that you at least have the 10%, and if you're willing to do more, they want to know that as part of the application.
I don't have a problem with asphalt, really. It's not like
There's several of them like it.
It's not like that thing is being used on a daily basis year round.
And that's one thing I looked at. Just here at the first of the year, KDOT Aviation put out a directory, basically, of all the airports in Kansas, and I just scrolled through it and looked at smaller towns under 5,000. Most of them, asphalt, which I thought was interesting, so.
Well, then, we have the equipment to maintain asphalt runway.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And as far as the treatments, I mean, we would add that in when we're doing the treatments to our streets?
Right.
That's exactly right.
And that was what was suggested, just add it into our regular rotation.
And what did you say the treatment schedule was, every five years, three years?
Three to five.
Three to five, okay. Well, we go out the three years and make an inspection of it. If we don't need it, we don't worry about it.
Yeah.
We wait till five.
Mm-hmm.
We could, we could do this, we could make this a yearly housekeeping deal, hoping for concrete.
Yeah.
Applied for this.
Mm-hmm.
Well, but also, we're getting to the point where it's too pricey, because
Yeah.
If it's, say, two and a half million, we gotta come up with at least 900,000 ourselves, which we don't have.
I understand that, I understand.
And Lochner and I, we discussed if there was any way to do a phased approach for concrete, but it, there's really not that works.
There's not.
Because you can't go and do 1,500 feet, and then it's turf. For a pilot, that's not going to help us at all.
No. And you can't really do it with asphalt.
Right.
You know, unless you do the whole runway in asphalt, and then you do the approaches getting to the runway
Mm-hmm.
At a later date.
And that's, that's how this would be. This would just be the runway, the 3,200 by 60.
Right, right. You mentioned, you mentioned that Buffalo Nickel, there was people that could have used it, but didn't because it wasn't.
I know that Upwood has that same situation. They, they go pick up people that fly in out of Pratt.
Pratt, and I
Do they?
I know in the past they had it.
Well, I know there's some gentlemen that have land, shop on the brown road, and they'd land in Pratt. But their main thing is over there is they can leave a vehicle there, be your ground. Okay. I would make a motion to instruct administration to go ahead and apply for this grant myself, to make it more appeasing to the state 15%.
Yeah. I, I, we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars difference. And so for me, it's the best thing for our economic butt, as far as return the city gets and what we provide to our community. A hundred thousand dollars goes an awful long ways in lots of other areas. I'd like to see something done at the airport, but 300,000 dollars for an airport, I guess I'm more in favor, I guess, of the 10% match versus the 15% just because of that.
Another thing I'm looking at, Wayne, in making a motion for 15 is, if that is favorable, is there possibly that would bring us in more tenants?
Maybe.
I think there, it is possible. Again, I've had some conversations, loose conversations with people with some potential interest in hangars. But at this time, with just the turf, it's not as appealing to them.
Well, maybe I'm not informed, very well informed. What is the tax return, like the tax income return? How much revenue is that going to generate for the city?
As far as
By having more tenants there?
Property tax.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know that I could give an educated answer to that right off the cuff.
I mean, I think if you could make a compelling case that like, well, yeah, that you're, we're going to generate 10,000 dollars worth of tax revenue every year because we've got more tenants in there, and it's going to pay that extra 100,000 dollars off that much quicker, that makes sense to me, too. But there's other ways, other infrastructure, I feel like we could probably invest in inside the city that would also give us a tax return as well. And I, I don't know what that is, and I, I mean, and I'm not trying to be difficult at all, because I am a little less informed, and you do no more than I do, as far as you guys have been looking at this airport, I think, for a while, but.
Well, I think the, the key point for us, just because we have been working on this airport for a very long time, this is a very competitive grant program. The odds of us getting this grant to begin with are pretty low, given here, and anything we can do to increase our chances is probably, you know, goes from, you know, very slow to slow.
And do we not, we've not, we have we not been approved for a grant to do the water deal?
We did, for half the cost, yes.
Right, and we're working on that to drop that again, because
Correct.
So, we're in that process, we're improving that one.
Yeah.
And we get it to a certain stage, and then say, well, let's forget that, you know, and we're done here.
And the state did put some more, sorry, the state did put some more money into this program this year, so the pot is a little deeper. So, there is more potential.
But if somebody built a hangar out there in facilities, that's, that's taxable, and is that on the city's tax levy, or is that just the county's?
We still own the property, we're leasing it, so, again, I think I'll have to do a little research, but I, I think how that will be is that parcel, whatever portion, will be taxable. The rest of the runway property and the airport is not.
Sure. Does it mean that, yeah?
Right. And so, yes, that tax bill would come to us, because we own the property.
Okay.
And I have to go back and look how the lease agreement's structured.
So we'd have one lease revenue?
Yes.
And we would have tax revenue on whatever facility that they would potentially build?
Yes.
Is that just considered inside city limits forever?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, like the value of the structure, yes.
You know, I just want to be able to be in a position where I can say to the taxpayers, like, how is this going to increase, how's this going to, how's this going to add to your life?
Mm-hmm.
Right? And I think if the main argument is it's going to bring in more hunters, probably going to piss off the locals. But also, you know what I mean? I mean, there's a little bit of a stigma there, and I don't have an issue there.
I don't mind that it would bring in more hunters, they just wouldn't have to travel to get
Sure. But if I can also say, well, it's also going to increase, it could potentially lower your property taxes, because now we have more taxable structures to tax, and it's going to have revenue, like, then it's a lot more defensible for me to say, yeah, that was worth the 100,000 dollars of, even though it's insurance proceeds, it's still a tax dollars.
And another aspect I haven't tou- touched on is the healthcare aspect with fixed wing air ambulance. I do have a letter of support from Morgan at the hospital as well. I did ask if there was any data around that, if there were times that if we would have had it, could they have flown a plane in here to transport a patient? And they really didn't have any numbers or anything around that, but I think that there are some times that it's too windy, and so the helicopter can't come in. So that, that is part of our application as well, as far as what does it bring the community, the potential of bringing in air ambulance as well.
I think that, I think that is, that topic right there was a whole reason why we decided to go ahead and, and turn the old airport into a business park and build another
Right.
Just for medical reasons.
Because it wasn't long enough
No.
Where it was.
No.
And at the time, the director of KDOT Aviation, their mission statement was to put air ambulance service, a paved runway, in every county in the state. And the problem, part of the problem has been, that's why we advanced so quickly on grants at the beginning, because that KDOT Aviation manager, that was their mission, was to do that. And so they were pushing these grants through, more so in counties that didn't already have, as opposed to just maintenance projects. And now, that director has changed several times, and their prerogative has changed several times. So that's why you saw such
Pushed toward that.
Such a push, and so many approvals, grant approvals there at the beginning of our process to get this going, is the managers, the, the director changed, and so their mission changed. And so then we saw screeching home.
I don't know 100% for sure, but I know at least one, one incident that comes to my mind that they had to do a transport to Kansas for that reason.
They put him on a fixed wing. When I tore my finger off, they talked about putting me on a fixed wing, because no doctor in Wichita wanted to. He was going to have to fly a helicopter out here, because if he couldn't land, they were going to take me real bad and put me on a fixed wing.
Yeah. And, you know, not only airplanes could land there, but also the helicopters. There's certain, you know, weather conditions where they can fly, but maybe they can't land in
To land in there.
Landing zone.
A windy situation.
And so they got to do it at a football field or something, which isn't super ideal if you had a hard surface runway to, you know, tie it up for a little bit. That would probably be a little bit more ideal for that as well. I, I do know that Dot City has, I think, two fixed wing airplanes now over there in their
Close.
Well, council, we do have a motion on the floor to approve the grant applications at a 15% city match.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also been moved consecrated to approve those airport improvement grant applications at a 15% city match. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Alright.
Thank you.
We'll get that in and cross our fingers again.
Yeah.
Nearly housekeeping.
Yep. January's the time for that. Uh, just speaking of nearly housekeeping, kind of another thing, just an annual report from KPP on our electric billing.
Um, we had a board meeting last Thursday, and this financial report for 2023 was passed out. I know that's a, a year ago, but they have finally got all the numbers in from other cities, and so this is an aggregate of all the number cities, except for two, I believe, put together. And so I think it's just good to look at, to kind of see where we are in comparison. I would say, just generally speaking, we're kind of in the middle of all those, when you look at rates and days of cash on hand, all of those sorts of things. So, I think just, that's nice to see that. And then I've also just included a 2024 billing history of what our KPP bills look like for 2024. You'll see that that was better over, compared to a couple years previous, so definitely within budget and on track. So, just for your information.
Council, any comments or questions on that report? I was happy to see, as you said, we're kind of in the middle of a lot of places, and just looking at our, you know, rates we charge customers, I, we're kind of on the lower end of average, it looks like, so it's good to know that we're being, you know, saving our residents some money on their electricity compared to a lot of other towns in KPP. Well, hearing no further comment on that, that takes care of our items of business tonight. Stacy, do we have any city staff reports?
Yes. We once again received an extremely generous donation from Mr. Charles Weiss. That came in towards the first of the year. It's been placed in the city's donation fund as per usual. If you guys have any ideas of projects or things that you would like to discuss, seeing those donation funds spent on, please come and, and chat with me about that, or if you want to have it as an agenda item, if you want to talk with people in the community of what maybe some needs are for community-type projects, I'm, I'm all ears, so. An update on the Pay Solar project, as I mentioned, we had a board meeting last Thursday and got a, a pretty significant update. On December 30th, the bonds were signed for that project and issued, and so that allowed for KPP to be able to say that the project was started in 2024, which allows for some assurance and shelter to get the tax credits for the program. I forget the dollar figure of panels that were purchased and an agreement with Priority Power, which is the contractor for the project. All of that happened in that day to get that done before January 1st. So, things are finally starting to move. Still have not got the final okay on the environmental that we're waiting on for two cities for the project, so until that final okay from USDA comes, that they have all the documentation that they need, we can't put a shovel in the ground or do anything, because we don't want to jeopardize the project. So, I'm still waiting for that, and again, expecting that any day. So stay tuned again for an official groundbreaking date. But next week, KPP, James from KPP and Priority Power are going to actually go to all the cities and make site visits to start looking at logistics, like lay down area for panels and the racking and all of that, and just how trucks will make those deliveries and everything. So, they'll be out here sometime, I think Wednesday, or Tuesday's the day they're looking at coming out here. So, one thing, just to give you a heads up, they, at the board meeting, provided a kind of rough timeline for the different cities and the projects. We are toward the bottom of the construction list, they're going to do the bigger ones first. So we're towards the bottom, however, because of storage, we're going to receive delivery of panels that will be crated and secured, but they're going to sit for a while. And so just the optics of that probably aren't going to be great, because people are going to wonder, is this ever going to happen? And unfortunately, the panels are going to sit for a little while, because we're towards the latter part of this year for getting started. But James said that it may be that, like, they go around and set posts, come back and do racking, you know, at different places, and so they're kind of in tandem with each other, so they're still working out some of those details. But just a heads up, we may receive delivery of stuff, and it sits for a little while. I'm waiting a final review of the RFQ for engineers on the sidewalks grant. I just want to have KDOT's eyes on it one last time before I put it out for advertisement. I, I want to make sure that I have all the things in there that need to be stipulated. Once that's okayed, I'm going to try to reach out to them tomorrow. We'll get that advertised, but as it's written right now, I've put February 12th for the deadline, and then for your review at the February 18th meeting. Last week at the KPP meeting, I was nominated and elected secretary treasurer to the KPP board. How that works per the KPP bylaws is that you serve a year term, and it is, you ascend through the various board. So unless you desire for me not to do that, or I leave the board for some reason, in four or three years, I would be president, moving through those positions. So, if you have any questions about that, let me know. Christie has sent the annual treasurer's report to be published in the paper, and due to the holiday yesterday trash is Thursday this week, a question we always get on weeks like this. That's what I got.
Questions for Stacy? Hearing no questions for staff, we will move on. Do we have any governing body comments tonight?
I have one. FYI, per city personnel or whatever, being on the board of Cometerra, we have officially hired a new site manager. Today was her first day.
Great.
She's from Coldwater.
Okay.
She is the site manager for Craig Plaza Apartments down there that the city owns down there. She's putting her time between there and here, but which?
I was talking with her this weekend, actually.
Really?
Yeah, there was a fundraiser down in Coldwater.
Yeah.
This is out across the table.
She, she's very on top of what, how this thing works, and the lady in northwest Kansas that helps us with all of our hood stuff, works with her, and
Great.
Yeah. So today is her first day. So, this, I better throw that out there. Being the city owns it.
Yes.
And her, they're actually in the area, her husband is manager out of Northland and Deadville, so.
Yep.
So, yeah, that's good. Any other governing body comments tonight? Alright, hearing none, we move along. We do have two executive sessions scheduled tonight. First up is to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of second parties for 10 minutes.
I'd make a motion to go into executive session till 6:35 for data relating to financial affairs and trade secrets.
Point, point second.
Okay. Been moved consecrated to go to executive session. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? We are in executive session. We are in executive session.